I'd like to call the meeting to order. Okay. Ms. Gill, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Castillo.
Here.
Ms. Gill.
Here.
Ms. Litten.
Here.
Mr. Reitinger.
Here.
Ms. Russell.
Here.
And Mr. Webb.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you all join me in saying I pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would seek a motion that we approve the agenda as presented. Thank you, Mr. Reitinger, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. All right. And then we'll move on to the Budget Work Session, Section 2.01.
Thank you, Chair Gill. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our work session of the Board. This evening, our topic of the night is the work session around budget. We've sort of separated this into a number of different parts, as you'll see on the agenda. We thought we would start this evening with responses to the budget questions that you all had submitted previously. We did receive a couple more this afternoon, and we'll work on those moving forward for our next meeting. And then what we'd like to do, as part of 2.02, is to invite our SAOs up to provide any feedback that they may have. Thank you all for being here. We really appreciate you very much about the budget. And then we also have, as 2.03, our SEEK, PEAK, and Administrative -- it's AEK, but I didn't want to say that, but it's AEK, our Administrative Employees Association, as well, to provide some budget feedback. And so those are the big three pieces that we want to dig into off the bat. So with the permission of the Chair, I'd like to turn it over to Kristin Michael, who would work us through our next round of budget questions, and then we'll take any additional after that.
So, thank you. We just posted the budget questions shortly before this meeting, so I apologize for the lateness of their being posted. For the citizens and anyone who's watching this either here tonight or on YouTube, every time we post an updated set of budget question responses, we'll update the date that's on the bottom of the cover page. So that's how you'll know when the last date they were updated. And then each version will have a table of contents at the front that we'll also refresh. So the new questions that we start with tonight actually begin with question six, which is We will not see my expert mousing skills here tonight. So the first question that I'm going to go through tonight, question six, was submitted by School Board Member Castillo. This question had to do with the pie chart that we included in the proposed budget, where we had grouped the pie chart with just a couple categories. We had salaries, benefits, a category called logistics, and then transfers and reserves. And the question that we received was, could we break out that pie chart for logistics into more detailed categories, which would be helpful? So to answer this question, we included both a data table on this first page, where we included the dollars in each category, as well as a percent of total. And then on the following page, we updated the pie chart. So on this pie chart, what you'll see is we've separated out the logistics category into the following items. Contracted services, that's really anything we've purchased. Examples of purchased services include grounds maintenance, that we hire external people to do, school nursing services, for example, that we contract with Fairfax County, other things where we're purchasing a service. The next category is materials and supplies. That can be anything from instructional materials, like textbooks, to custodial supplies, for example. Then we have utilities, insurance, travel, and rental. That's kind of a broad category, but that includes all of our utilities, electric, gas, water, things of that nature, insurance for our buildings and our vehicles. And then also included in that category is travel, which would be travel for professional development and building rental. So if we're paying any rental fees, copier rental would also be included in there as well, so equipment rental. And then that last category in this section of logistics is capital and capital replacements. Capital is generally defined as any item that has an individual value of $5,000 or more. So if we were to look at a student chair or desk at school, or an office dresser chair, that would not be capital. That would fall into that materials and supply category. But included in capital typically what we think of are items like computers and buses. Right? Computers don't necessarily meet that $5,000 threshold individually, but if it's something we're buying that has to be used in a grouping, then it'll meet that qualification as part of that group. So that's typically what you see in that category. So all of those items together will make up logistics. So on the pie chart, we included the percentages, and in the data chart, the dollars. So any -- yes.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Just one question. Where do computers fit into this, the computer leases?
So we typically, because we've been leasing our computers, are going to fall in that capital and capital replacement category, because we're leasing them as a capital lease. Okay. The next question is question seven. All right. I'm going to scroll down just a little bit, so everybody can see the data chart. So question seven was to provide an actual versus projection for kindergarten over time, right? This question really came out of the previous proposed budget discussion, where we talked about, as we're looking at staffing for next year, actually using a number that's below what Weldon Cooper had projected for kindergarten, right, based on their past historical trends. So when we look at kindergarten, kindergarten, of course, is difficult to project. You don't currently have any cohort. They use a birth ratio, a methodology, in terms of projecting that enrollment. So when we look at that chart, when we think of 2020, I'm going to start there, and I'll work down the chart. Weldon Cooper's projection for kindergarten was 207 students, right? That's actually 44 students greater than our current September 30th actual of 165. So if you look at this current school year, 2019, Weldon Cooper's projection was for 188 kindergarteners. We have 165 as of September 30th, so we were 23 students under the projection. So that's this current year. Last year, 2018, again, the projection was 188 students. We had 171 as of September 30th, so we were 17 students under that projection. So when you take those two years, really combined with that significant growth that they were projecting for next year, that's why we're cautious about the projection for kindergarten. If you look just a few years back, you will see that in 2016 and 2017, we were, in both of those years, just slightly over that projection. And then in 2015, Weldon Cooper, that's the last time they had projected a kindergarten class for us that was greater than 200 students. At that point, they had projected kindergarten enrollment at 203, and you can see that year we were 44 students under projection. So we hope that this kind of detailed history helps in terms of our conversation about kindergarten enrollment.
Yes, Mr. Castillo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So how will this help us? How will this information help? What will we do with it?
So my --
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but --
No, I think that's perfect.
But I just wouldn't know, the Wall Street Journal, well, it's not really the Wall Street Journal. It was the CDC recently came out with a study saying birth rates are at a historical low. And so I think we kind of have two variables, right? We have maybe lower birth rates, but all these houses being torn down, and maybe 1.0x children moving in. So what do we do with this?
So what I would say first is when Weldon Cooper does their enrollment projections, they're not really looking at the new housing starts that are here. Their projections don't go to that level. They're really looking at that, you know, birth decay ratio methodology, right? So I do think we want to be really mindful about all of the new developments and how that's going to impact our future projections. I think how this will help is, my hope is that it gives both the Board and the public an idea of why we said we were concerned about the projection for kindergarten for next year, and why when we're looking at staffing preliminarily, we're using a number that's 30 lower, right? We were really basing that, you know, suggested revision based on past history, right, and that we didn't just arbitrarily say, okay, we're going to use something lower for some other reason.
But just, I mean, we're kind of, Weldon Cooper kind of did that, and we're kind of doing that, too, right? I mean, we're sort of, this is the Weldon Cooper correction factor that we're introducing, sort of. This isn't easy, but I'm just kind of asking.
It's not easy. And I think what I would say is, clearly, Weldon Cooper has a much greater track record in terms of doing projections than certainly me, when we think about that. They do projections on a statewide level, and they do them very well. I think when you look at projections for a small group, right, it gets harder. It's much easier to do projections for a larger number, right? And you can be off by a number, and obviously, the bigger denominator, the easier that math becomes. I think when we think about this, what we want to do is, we want to be really cautious in terms of staffing for kindergarten. We want to absolutely ensure that we're meeting the planning factors, and that we don't have class sizes at kindergarten that are exceeding our planning factors. But we don't also want to hire additional staff, right, if we don't think we're going to need them. So when you look at next year, that projection really is significantly above even the number that was in the projection for this year, right? So that projection, as it originally stands, would actually have us needing additional kindergarten teachers, right? So I think this really tells us that we should be thoughtful and cautious as we move forward with that staffing, but at the same time, ensuring that we're meeting all of those planning Okay. Question eight. Question eight was, please provide the fund balance history over time. When we look at the fund balance history over time, this answer includes charts for all three of the school board funds. This data is really similar to the data that was shared with the Board at the monthly monitoring report for June that we did in September that was at the end of the fiscal year. This data has been updated, though, to reflect all of the data that's in Falls Church City's CAFR or their Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, right? And that includes all the adjustments that were still made after we brought to the school board that final report, right? So the numbers are slightly different when we look at it. When we look at each of the funds over time, the way these charts are laid out, I have the Community Services Fund at the top. It starts in 2013. What it starts with is, at that point in time, what was the fund balance that was available in 2013? How much did we budget to use from that fund balance, right? In the Community Services Fund that year, we projected to use, which is why there's a parentheses, $428,500. But in the end, after all of the revenue and expenditures in that fund, what do we actually do? So we actually used or decreased our fund balance by $63,088. So then when you take that use and add it to 2013, then you can see we started out our 2014 fund balance at $823,800, right? And that's how that walks through year over year, right? So when we look at that. We have all three of the funds here as we're looking across, right? Generally, what you can see, and this is all consistent with the data that we shared before, when we look at the Food Service Fund, right, we had been adding to our fund balance every single year until 2018, right? In 2018, we used some of our fund balance versus adding to it. And then lastly, when we look at the School Operating Fund for 2018, and we look at the actual use or increase in the fund balance, that $848,250 was prior to the additional expenditures for Mount Daniel. So I put that information back in the paragraph, just to remind people, the renovation project at Mount Daniel did not include funding for furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, right, FFNE. So as part of that final budget review in September, we got the Board's approval to use funding of about $670,000 from the School Operating Fund towards those purchases. So that is not reflected in that fund balance as of September 30th, but we will see that use reflected in this year. Any questions about fund balance? Okay. Moving on to question nine. Substitute benefits. When we look at substitute benefits, the question was, how many substitute teachers qualify for benefits or health care, and how many sign up? So when we look at our employees, contracted employees receive benefits, right, health, retirement, and other benefits. But our substitutes and non-contracted or hourly employees, they're not eligible for benefits, with the exception of health. For health, they're eligible per the requirements of the Affordable Care Act. That Affordable Care Act requires us annually to do a look back. We assess the previous 12-month period, right? If they meet a threshold of working, on average, 30 hours or more per week in that look-back period, they're eligible for health insurance for the coming year. So we do that every single fall, with that eligibility being effective January 1st. So when we did our look back of this last year, we had five employees that worked more than 1,320 hours in that one-year period. That was our threshold, assuming 30 hours per week. Of those five employees, two were custodial substitutes, two were event staff, and then the last one is someone who performs work, both as a facilities assistant and an event staff. And of those five people, one elected to participate in health insurance. Question 10. Question 10 was, please provide costing for the items on the unfunded list. Sorry about that. So this chart shows all of the projected costs for the items on our unfunded list. So when you look at the items on this list, a lot of these items are doing increases in people from half-time to full-time positions, right, or extending the length of someone's contract, so going from 10 months to 11 months. So all of these were costed using a different methodology than you guys saw last year. So when we look at last year's costing for the budget development, they'd used a set position dollar for every single individual person. In this case, all of these items were costed, really reflecting kind of that average costing for that group of employees, right, to give us a more realistic cost. And then when we look at costs with benefits, in these cases, when we're looking at these positions as increasing positions from half-time to full-time, that benefit cost is only the salary-sensitive benefits, right? We're already assuming that, you know, if they're participating in health, there may be a slight change there, but they're just salary-sensitive benefits. So salary-sensitive benefits include retirement, life insurance, and FICA, for example. So all of those items were costed individually. Okay? Keep, yes.
So are there, all these are personnel. So do we have any un, sorry, it looks, oh, except for the software.
Yes. Managed back software, the very last one, is non-personnel. It's actually a software cost.
So there's no other non-personnel issue other than that in the things that ideally we'd like to have?
So what I would say is, when we looked at this budget, we really told people ahead of time. We were really focused on compensation. So what I would say is, this is not the only need. I think if we went out and said, you know, what are all of your other needs, the list would be much greater. But I think this is really kind of a selective list of some of the key things that people pointed out that were critical. There are definitely other places where we could use additional funding or support.
Okay. I mean, I would suggest if there's, I know that if you asked everybody everything they would want, it would get unwieldy, but I guess I'm thinking, I'm pretty sure there's important stuff that's not on this list yet. So I don't know when you cross over into asking, you know, providing too long a list, but I urge you to, if there's important stuff that's not on this list, I would certainly like to know.
Okay. We have one more completed one for this evening. This was a question from Chair Gill regarding our special populations numbers, asking us to update the chart that we included in the proposed budget, where we had looked at the increase in services. All of these are services, additional services that students need. So in the proposed budget presentation, we had shown the increase from 16 to 17 to 17 to 18, both in terms of the number of services and the percentage increase. For this current year, FY '19, we've updated those numbers. These numbers are all preliminary, so they're not for the full year, you know, so they could change. But preliminarily, we've included the numbers in green at the bottom. So the last thing I wanted to do, if I can, is just to go through the other questions that we have that are still in process, so people know what questions have been asked. So first, the question from School Board Member Reitinger about the time study. Okay. You had asked in terms of the paraprofessionals question and giving a timeframe for that. That answer's still in process. We also have the question that you had asked about changing the way we do the budget data level report to include additional categories that were more recent. So that is in process as well, and I just wanted to make sure, the way we have it currently is we have our FY '17 budget, and then actual, and what the variance is. We'll do the same for '18. For '19, we have the budget, the actual expenditures through month six. The piece that we're still working on is the projection for the rest of the year, and then the 2020 proposed budget, and we're doing that at the object level. Okay. So that is still in process. We also have the question to the city, which they are currently working on, about provide the projection accuracy over time for city revenue projections. So that is in process. And then the new questions that we received today from School Board Member Litten is, are the salary savings relatively predictable? Is that amount similar year over year? On page 110, the School Food Service Fund is proposing a significant jump in cafeteria sales. What is that based on, and how will the funds be made up if they don't materialize? On page 158, Maintenance Service shows an increase of $335,000. And can we explain what that increase is for? On page 175, Ground Services for TJ are zeroed out. Can we explain that and why they were eliminated? On page 201, there seems to be a shifting from professional services to maintenance. Can we explain? And then lastly, do we expect the position realignments to be primarily teacher, support, staff, or administration? So all of those we'll also complete as soon as we can.
So thank you, Ms. Michael, for running through those questions. As we continue sort of in the iterative process of the budget, if there are questions that you'd like for us to work on before now, between now and the next work session, if you'll get those to us, that would be great. Obviously, the more time we have to prepare them, the better our answers can be, or more fully and comprehensive they can be. So if you could get those to us, maybe a few days in advance, maybe a week in advance, probably, is best. That would be terrific. So are there any other questions that anyone wants to raise tonight?
Mr. Castillo?
I'll be that guy. So just, first of all, with respect to the salary ask, I know historically, the past few years, some of the admin slots have not been competitive with local jurisdictions, and that's been a gap. And I don't know if, in the proposed budget, those are getting closed, but it --
You can finish your question.
No, I'm done.
Oh. We understand from last year's budget that there were some concerns specifically around the assistant principal salaries, and I think that's what you're referencing from last year. This budget does not specifically address those. This budget really is focused on compensation for all. Just given the nature of the limited resource we have, and to get us where we need to go, we felt like it would be better this year to do the step and the COLA, and then in the next year, begin to look at making sure that we have competitive salaries across the board. As a side note, the Virginia Education Association put out a salary study today that compares jurisdictionally how school divisions do across the state. I haven't had a chance to review the entirety of that, but just in my very cursory look, I think it will have some implications for us from a salary perspective in next year's budget as well, with respect specifically to teachers who are towards the end of their career, between 20, 25, 30-year mark. So those are some things that we also need to look at, to perhaps find a way, again, not this year, but in the future, to infuse some money into that salary scale, to take care of some of those areas of gap that may exist.
Okay. That's, thank you, Dr. Noonan. I would suggest we maybe add that gap to the unfunded ask list, if that's all right. And then just one other question to follow up on the Chair's question 11. Maybe this is here, and I just don't understand. How these changes in the special population numbers translate into staff, increased staffing needs? Does it have a tipping point where you need act 3 FTEs or something, equivalents? Because that would be helpful, too. Thank you.
Right. I will say, right now, when we look at students with disabilities, just as an example, the staffing requirements that we have, the staffing requirements that the School Board has put forth and are mandated federally are, we are exceeding those staffing requirements at this point. So the tipping point actually, for us, might be the other direction. Where can we reduce staff and become more efficient? Right now, I think we're in a really good position from a staffing perspective with respect to special needs. I do think that there are some modification that we're doing from an operational perspective, specifically around our LEAP staffing, to make sure that we're providing direct services for students. And that means for us to find some efficiencies and make some operational moves to make sure that everyone who works with a LEAP student is LEAP certified. So we're working on that as well.
I'll move on to 2.02.
I guess I'm not on. There we go. I'd like to invite our SAOs up. Ms. Seacrest, you were right in the front, so you look like you are eager to rock and roll here. I know. I don't understand that. But we would invite you to either come join us at the table, or if you would like to go one at a time and speak from the podium, that's fine, too, but --
I'll just --
Yeah, please do. And -- Maybe we could do, maybe we could do the --
PTAs.
PTAs first, and then maybe have, is that okay, Julie? Okay. Great. So thank you so much for being here, and love to hear your thoughts about the budget so far. This is just, for those of you that might be listening at home or here at the Board, this is sort of an annual tradition, if you will, and that is that our SAOs and our association representatives do come and provide some feedback. They've all had, so many of them were here last week when we proposed the budget. Thank you again for coming last week and have had a chance to talk with some of their membership about the budget, and hopefully, this year, had a little more time. So thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Catherine?
I may go first. Thank you for having me here. I'm Catherine Seacrest, the Elementary PTA President. I think I know most of you all here. I have spent the last several weeks speaking, not only with my Elementary PTA Board, but also with my principals and staff members, as well as getting a pulse on the PTA community at the elementary level. Overall, we wanted to thank Dr. Noonan and his team and the School Board for presenting a budget that is within the city's guidance, and working with the city to tackle our town's many fiscal responsibilities with transparency. We, in working with my board and with members, we also wanted to thank you for walking hand in hand, I think is the way Dr. Noonan says it often, with the city, as we tackle quite a bit in terms of building projects and keeping our operating funds going forward. We are really pleased to see that the School Board is looking at splitting any extra monies that would come in 50-50 with the city as well. We wanted to say, in particular, we also were pleased that the budget continually references back to the triennial plan. It's really helpful in talking to our members, when we can say there are reasons why choices were made, and we can show them the placemat. And it helps a lot that we can, when tough decisions have to be made, reference that. So thank you for that. We also wanted to commend you for focusing on the COLA and the step increase for all staff. We know that that's been important. It is helpful to hear that maybe next year, we can do a little bit more detailed work. Dr. Noonan was just saying that, in terms of individual places where increases might be needed. But I think especially for a team environment, it's very helpful. And what I hear from our membership is that they want to take care of their teachers. And particularly at the elementary level, we have a lot of big change that is about to occur as second grade moves over to Mount Daniel. So I think that overall, there is a sense that, across the board, having that step and that COLA is a nice way to continue to focus on the all-systems growth. We've been talking a lot about that at the PTA level, about how we can engender that as well, and make sure that there's a team approach. We also wanted to commend you all for really focusing on substitute pay. That is something that we have heard from our teachers. Making sure that they feel supported when they can't find substitutes, particularly on the paraprofessional level, really affects the day-to-day functioning in a classroom, and affects our kiddos when they come home, whether or not they need that special attention, or somebody in their class needs a little special attention. And if that's not occurring, it can make for a tough And if that's not occurring, it can make for a tough day, especially when it happens over and over again. So thank you for that detail. We also wanted to focus on saying how pleased we are that you'll be keeping the positions that were added last year. We've really seen great benefit from having the LEAP parent liaison. We've worked really closely with them as a PTA. We've tried to make sure that all of our PTA documents are in both Spanish and in English, and we're working with her to make sure that that population feels really included in all of our events and all school events. So we see a lot of value in that. We also see so much value in the administration support that was added at Thackery. So thank you for that, and thank you for keeping that, as well as the PYP coordinator. One of the things that we do a lot at the PTA level is events, and many of those events have a PYP connection. So we're coming up on International Night in March, and we're working with Carrie Cheka, making sure that we are embracing that curriculum. And it's wonderful to have a specific person that we can work with who can really focus on that. So thank you for that, and thank you for keeping those things in place for us. We do, I think one of the biggest questions is, I have approached people and told them that there will be five positions that will go away based on attrition. The biggest question I get is, where, where, who, who? I know that some of those questions can't be answered right away, and I know that more will be coming out in the future. And I think it would be helpful that we continue to be really transparent about that, particularly as Mount Daniel and TJ have this big transition. I am getting many questions about staffing, and are some of those positions going to be eliminated based on that transition? So it would be really helpful if we can continue to keep those lines of communication open in regards to that. The bottom line is that, especially in terms of the attrition, the number-one thing I hear is what's going to happen to class size, especially at the elementary level. That's what our parents care about. And it's been very wonderful that I can answer, as far as I know, class size will stay the same, and within what the School Board has asked for. So again, just want to commend you for presenting a budget that does focus on that as well. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Suzanne Hladke, the MEH PTA president. And I was just thinking about what you just said about class size, and I thought you all had it tattooed on your arm, that you can't rate, I mean, whatever. Okay. So thank you for letting us speak today and talk about the budget, which is great. I do have to give major props to Kristin and her team. I think that binder is amazing. I think it's awesome and well-organized, and I'm sure Marie Kondo would be super impressed with you. And coming from someone in my former life who was in finance, I think when you probably found those cost savings so huge, you must have had a great day. It was really fun, so, good job. Okay. So the MEH PTA Executive Board fully supports this budget, and especially since it calls for a step and COLA increase for our teachers. Anything that we can do to retain our excellent staff and high-quality staff should be done whenever possible, and I note the staff would appreciate that compensation is the number-one priority this year. We also would like to express our gratitude, like Kristen said, Catherine said, I'm sorry, that it looks to be a less contentious budget season, which is great to see as well. I think because of your transparency and your ability to be creative in staying within the guidance, so that's great. And we also want to thank Dr. Noonan and Chair Gill for coming to our PTA meeting in February to speak with the community. I think they'll be encouraged to hear what you have to say, so that's great. Thank you for that, too. I also wanted to touch on a few of the unfunded items that were brought up tonight, too. Quite a few are for MEH, so I understand they're not, they might not be funded this year, but I think it's good to have a strategy and to talk about them. So the first one is the NYPD coordinator for MEH at Mason. I've been lucky enough to work with Alicia Miller, the NYPD coordinator, and she's wonderful, and I'm continually impressed with her, that she's able to do all of NYPD for sixth through tenth grade, you know, all the other extras that she has to do, ATL and curriculum and Give Day, and eighth-grade community project, and tenth-grade personal project. I mean, it's just a lot for one person, and from what I understand, it's normally done with two people between those sixth through tenth grades. So I think we should support her, and we don't want to lose her, and especially with this rising sixth-grade class that's coming, it's our largest class that'll be coming through, and so there'll be NYPD for five years. So that's huge for one person to deal with all of that. So I hope we can get an extra person to deal with that. That would be wonderful. And also the dean of students to eleven months, and the instructional technology support for another month. For the dean of students, I think, I know he already works probably eleven months and works overtime, but to get him the support he needs and to get us up and running for, during the summertime, when, before school starts with IEPs and new students and transition, I think that's invaluable. And then for instructional support, I think having that person over the summer to help with scheduling, technology issues with that. And then for parents coming from the elementary school to middle school, it requires a lot more knowledge in schoolagie and power school, and what all that means. And if you could have summer programs for people, or tutorials and stuff like that for parents during the summer, I think that would be valuable, too. So if we could do that, that'd be great. But other than that, thank you, and look forward to seeing everybody in February.
My name is Elizabeth Mead... Oops. There we go. See, technology, not my friend. I'm Elizabeth Mead, and I'm the president of the George Mason PTSA. I want to thank you for your time tonight, and I wanted to, as a taxpayer, specifically thank Dr. Noonan for proposing a responsible budget. It is a sign to me of fiscal stewardship, financial fiscal stewardship, that gives us at Mason, the Executive Board, great confidence in going forward in our next big project of the high school. And this is a good place to start in building the relationships with the community and with the parents on these big expenditures that we have. So we're grateful for you for that and your staff. Thank you very much. At Mason, at the PTA, we work really hard to support our staff, and not just cookies and lunches, although those are very important, I won't discount that, but we work hard to raise money so that we can support our staff through grants and gift cards and such. And so we are very pleased to see the funding for the COLA, the cost-of-living adjustment, and the step increase for the teachers. Going forward, we would also support this for all staff, and I was grateful that you brought that up tonight. Another thing at Mason we want to bring to your attention is, we are concerned about the mental health and wellness of our kids. This is something that's been stewing around for a bit. We're talking about how we can address it. It's a big deal. And so we are grateful for and want to continue to support funding for the psychologist and in the full-time position for social work, and any other behavioral specialists who can help those kids. As you continue the conversation during the budget conversation here, we would appreciate if you could allocate enough resource to our counseling department, so that they have the appropriate toolkit they need to meet these needs, the mental health and wellness of our kids, and we'd be grateful for that going forward. Finally, I just want to give a shout-out to my fellow parents who ran for this job and you're serving in your time. Thank you for this. We're really grateful for you. Thanks for your time.
So red is off? Red is off? Sorry.
That was my own?
No. Your own. Sorry, sorry.
Technology, yeah. My name is Julie Donnelly, and I am the president of George Mason High School Athletic Boosters. It actually encompasses students from eighth to twelfth grade, so we do have middle-school parents who are part of our association. I want to take a slightly different approach, mostly because what we, from our wonderful PTA presidents, who we work with and who are amazing, but what Boosters does is very different. So I just want to mostly tell you a little bit about what we do and why I think it's important that the School Board understands what we do. And mostly what we want you to understand is how much we provide that's not in the budget, that is considered essential. Not to sort of wag our fingers at you and say, shame on you, but for you to understand that there are things, that we are raising tens of thousands of dollars every year for things that our teachers, our principals, our coaches, our School Board, our superintendent would, and myself, would consider to be absolutely essential, and it's not in your budget. So let me just briefly tell you, the budget for the athletic department for 2017-18 was forty thousand dollars. That comes directly from athletic fees. That means, the budget varies year to year, but it was the same the year before. That covers uniforms, equipment fees, officiating fees. Because the budget is so small, it's boosters that provides the bulk of what I think many people consider to be essential. We will, we pay for major equipment purchases for our teams, provide financial aid in the form of athletic fees, personal equipment, sporting clinics, student, fees for students facing financial hardships. We provide seven college scholarships every year to graduating seniors, and they aren't necessarily have to be student athletes. We have managers who qualify, so it's, so we're raising a lot of money, not just for our kids in school now, but for their futures as well. So the reality is that a lot of what we think, of course, is in the budget, actually isn't. So the lacrosse safety nets, the baseball batting practice, motorized cart, the upgrades that happened to the, not the painting in the bathrooms, and thank you, thank you, thank you for doing that for our concession stand. You can't even imagine what a difference that made. But the inside of the concession stand was absolutely not up to snuff. It had a small sink that had cold water. That's not healthy or safe. So we raised the money, we did some small renovations, working with the School Board, working with SARS facilities to make sure that we were getting the right contracts, doing what we needed to do, but we paid for that. And we provided a second ice machine. Coach G was incredibly concerned after the horrible incident in University of Maryland. We felt we needed to have an ice machine by the field. So we were able to purchase a second ice machine. It's in the sort of storage facility. One, it's a great during the spring especially, or early fall when it's incredibly hot and late spring, we need ice at the field. We can't have her going up, leaving the field. So now we have it there, but it's also there, so if in a horrible situation where a student has a heat-related incident, the ice is there. We can get a student into that area and cool them down immediately, as opposed to wasting the time getting them back. So that, we felt, was essential. It's there. It's functioning. One thing I do want to talk about, and then I'll finish, is the Bill Rose Fund. And the Bill Rose Fund, which we do a lot of our fundraising for, is because we, is for students and families who are facing financial challenges. And we are, it's the number-one thing that we are here for, that we believe in, that is more important than getting new uniforms or other good stuff, is that every child who wants to participate can participate. It would be a nonstarter with me if that wasn't happening. And so our athletic fee is a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the first sport, and then the second sport would be twenty-five. So I have, my son is cross-country and then track in the summer, so we pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars for cross-country, and then his next fee coming up would be twenty-five. The max is three hundred for a family. But if there, there are many families that can't afford that, so we cover that through the Bill Rose Fund. For the 2018-19 academic year, right now, as of December 2018, there were twenty-seven waivers of athletic fees, and we paid out about twelve-hundred-and-sixty in fees. And we anticipate the number will increase, because spring is the big season for us. What I also want you to note, we didn't have a meeting last night, but we did an electronic meeting because of the snow, and the Executive Board made a decision that because of the federal shutdown, that we are, we voted to extend the Bill Rose Fund to any family who is affected by the shutdown. We are very concerned that there will be families who say, hey, a hundred and twenty-five dollars, that's, that's a phone bill, that's an utilities bill. You're going to forego spring. That, that's a nonstarter with us. So we made this decision, and we're going to start to publicize that, that any family who feels that they, they just simply can't afford it, can, you know, we will cover it. Now, you should understand, ten kids is over a thousand dollars. We have a discus cage that needs to be replaced for track. But we said, you know, we'll figure it out. It means that we're going to deplete some funds that we probably don't want to deplete, but we're going to do it, because for us, it's a nonstarter to have families left out in the cold. The first scrimmage is late February. I am putting on my government cap and praying that the shutdown is done by, is resolved by then, because that's when the fee needs to come in. The students can practice, but if they haven't paid their fee by the first scrimmage, they can't play. So we're hoping that it won't come to that, that we have a month, that the powers that be up in Capitol Hill will figure this out, but I'm actually not confident of that. So we decided we're just going to take this vote, so that families don't have to worry. So I just want you to understand that that's another budget constraint on us, but that we're going to make it happen, so that we don't lose kids who would normally want to play. So what I basically want to say to you is, I know that there are so many constraints on the budget, and there's so much that needs to be covered. And what my hope is that someday, because I know it's not going to be today, and it's probably not going to be next year, that we figure out a way to get some budget line, to sort of deal with these sort of large things that need to be funded, that, you know, the ice machines and carts and equipment that is, you know, the lacrosse cages that aren't just for the lacrosse players, they make sure that the balls don't go and hit the kids running track, or the kids practicing soccer, that there's a lot of safety equipment that protects a lot of students at any, you know, at a single time, and that we pay for. You don't. And to find a way to sort of integrate that into the budget, so that we can make sure that we can continue to support kids who are facing, or families' financial challenges, because we don't see that decreasing, we see that either staying the same or increasing. Thank you for your time. Really appreciate it.
I'm Maria Marcus. I am the president of the Falls Church City Band Boosters, and I want to thank you for having us here tonight. All of us SAOs are very grateful that you've, you've provided us a specific opportunity for our input. I guess the band boosters kind of sit somewhere in between the athletic boosters and the PTAs. We are very unique in that we, we cover three schools, not just one, and a very large range of students. Actually, our numbers are about, for those of you who like numbers, are about one in every three students from grades four through twelve is in the band in Falls Church City Public Schools. And that's a significant number. And, and these kids are also on our sports teams, they are on our Odyssey of the Mind teams, our robotic teams. They cross over into IEP programs, special needs students. Band is kind of a wonderful central place where the, where all these kind of students can come together. They work as a team, much like an athletic team. They also interact very much like you would in a classroom cooperatively, and create their wonderful music. So it's a, it's a great honor and a privilege for me to be able to represent that group, but it is, it is a diverse group, and, and the needs are great. I want to thank the Board and the Superintendent for this year's budget, for the year we're currently in. For the first time in many, many years, we have a, we actually had capital investment dollars allocated specifically to the band, and, and we're very, very grateful for that. We are still in the process of spending that, because our band directors were very busy with holidays and winter concert prep, so it's very difficult to do your shopping when you're, when you've got bigger priorities, like your kids on your mind. But those are, those are being spent, and, and although we're very grateful, they are not even enough to cover what the band needs at TJ at this point. So I just wanted to put you on notice of that, that the need is there, our gratitude is great for this, but you should be aware that we have a lot of years of neglect, if you will, to make up for in, in the capital investment in the band program, which is the school-owned instruments in particular. These instruments, at the, especially at the middle-school and high-school level, are handled by three to four students every day. That's a lot of wear and tear. And when you add in that it's twelve-year-olds and thirteen-year-olds, and fourteen-year-olds and fifteen-year-olds juggling books and backpacks and space in the room, that's additional wear and tear. And so our instruments constantly need repair. We have some instruments, some of the larger instruments at the high school, that are actually as old as some of our youngest teachers. So, and, and we get to the point with some of these where we send them out for repairs, and we get the hands up, there's really not anything else we can repair with this instrument. There's nothing left to work with here. So, so that's just an ongoing thing, and I wanted to make you aware of that. As we, you were discussing earlier about unfunded items, I appreciate that the triennial plan involved us at the very start, and we're so grateful for that. We'd like to make sure that we stay in the forefront of your mind, because the... We'd like to make sure that we stay in the forefront of your mind, because the amazing things that our children do wouldn't be possible without the, the materials to do it. We, we make do, our, our band directors are fantastic at making do with as little as possible. And for that reason, Band Boosters is very, very happy to support the, the focus on our teachers this year and the COLA and the STEP funding. But we also feel like providing them the raw materials that they need to have with them is also a form of support for them, so I bring it up to you there. We also are very, very grateful that we actually have designated band funds that are outside of a materials fund designation for the first time in this year's budget. Our band teachers cannot plan, they can't, they can't plan for several years down the road as your triennial plan tries to do, when they don't know that they're even going to have designated funds year on year. So we also just wanted to reiterate to you that, that we, we would like that to continue. As I said, the funding is falling short of the need, and Band Boosters as an organization unfortunately is not able to, to close that gap. We've been kind of putting Band-Aids on it over the past eight or, eight or so years where we've had no capital investment funding. But just to make you aware of, of what our priorities are out there. And, and our, and our band, especially at the high school level, I would argue that it is one of our most visible pieces of the Falls Church City Public Schools curriculum. And, and our kids are out there at holiday time, and they're volunteering at the senior center, playing at area restaurants, they are doing hurricane benefit concerts when, when things come up. They're a highly motivated group, and, and our, our band directors are highly motivated directors. So it's a wonderful combination of people. But in order for them to continue to play at the level that, that the, the community and the surrounding community has come to expect from them, we are going to need to, to kind of step up our game a little bit. So just throwing all of that out there, as you consider all of the give and takes you have to, to wrestle with, I know this is a, is a difficult process, but, but for the bands and for the, the teachers who are guiding our students, it's, it's, it's actually one of the, the most important things that we can, we can do for them. So Band Boosters will continue to, to try to compensate wherever we can. We have a very small working budget. Most of our, our support for our band directors comes in the form of administrative support, running things like the band trip, fundraisers for our students so that they can go, things like the lessons program that is for all, all Falls Church City musicians. That's a nonprofit program that is just a parent volunteer that, that does this incredible record-keeping, hiring instructors, and pairing our students with teachers, and working with the band directors. And it's, it's, it's really wonderful that we've got that kind of resource here in the city. It's a tribute to the people that live here, I think, and, and the system that you all represent. But, but financially, we're always, we're always at a disadvantage when, when things come up. Julie mentioned the furlough, and the, as long as the furlough continues, it's, it's a problem for us because our final payments for the band trip for the high schoolers is coming up. This year, we have a record amount of chorus and band students who will be going. I think there's 116 children who will be going to Nashville. They have a really great itinerary and a chance for performance and clinics, and a recording session at Studio 54, so that's all going to be great. But we're worried about those students who now may be looking at, oh, I can't really make it. And for a band, just like for a sports team, if you lose somebody that is playing one of your lower bass instruments, you've lost the quality of your performance. So Band Boosters is, is, is aware of this, what's this, what is going on here, and we're trying to adjust our deadlines for, for monies coming in. And we'll, we'll step in and try and compensate as much as possible for any families that are affected. But, you know, just wanted to let you know that, that we'd like to do so much more, we'd like to hire some clinicians for, for middle school and high school now that their blocks are the same, that we can get a, a kind of an economy going there with the kids going over to the high school and sharing in one big clinician session or something. We, we don't have the funds to, to add in those kinds of things, and those kinds of things for band directors and the students are so valuable, and added new professional coming in, giving new feedback, and, and motivating the kids again and again. It's, it's a real, real important part of the curriculum. It happens, but we would like to see it happen more often. So thank you for your time and the invitation to be here tonight, and, and I look forward to seeing how this process progresses.
Thank you. Anyone on the board have any questions? Mr. Castillo?
Just, just a quick question. Dr. Noonan, are you pretty much aware of what some of those looming needs are with respect to band and athletic facilities in terms of, you know, especially capital-ish things that are timing out?
I'm aware. Yeah, we do. We, we have a monthly S.A.O. meeting, unfortunately we had to cancel this morning because of weather, but I am aware of those. One of the things that maybe wasn't clear is that we do have a, a line item in the budget again this year for capital band equipment, so that's a recurring line to take care of some of the issues that have, have been indicated today. And Julie and I have talked about some sort of line at some point for athletic equipment. But we do appreciate the work that the, both booster organizations do on behalf of the schools. They really do fill a void for us, and very appreciative of that.
And I just want to say that, yeah, the superintendent, especially with the new, sorry, with the new high school, has been just so incredibly responsive to the things that we felt were just very important to have in terms of the athletic facility, because it's not just the high school, the, you know, kids from, you know, all the rec teams, and we have travel teams, and that's actually money coming into the city. So we've worked really closely, I, we have no complaints about, we, we think we're, we're getting a, I mean, we all want more, but we are really pleased with what's happening. Superintendent has just, you know, we've been, been listening to us and talking to us, and we, you know, if I feel like I need to talk to him, I call him and we talk. And, and so the superintendent has been absolutely, knows exactly what's going on with athletics, very responsive, and has worked really closely with us. So we're really, we're really happy, and thank you.
Yeah, no, I think just as long as we communicate to the community that this, this stuff does, I mean, it's sort of like the high school writ large, right? If you let something get to be 65 years old, it's 65 years old and needs replacement. And same thing with athletic infrastructure and, and instruments and all that other stuff, so. Yes, thank you for coming out tonight.
So if there are other questions, I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight and for your hard work and detailed look at the budget and for supporting all of our schools and all of our students, especially when there are ways that we can't, that you all step in. Thank you so much. Moving along to 2.03, Dr. Noonan?
Thank you, Jared Gill. I'd like to invite up our employee association representatives tonight. We have our Support Employees Association, we have our Professional Employees Association, we have our Administrative Employee Association. So if you all want to join us up here, that'd be great, and I'll let you sort out who speaks first. Thank you all for being here and sharing with us your thoughts.
My name is Deborah Newman. I'm the principal, Principal Secretary at TJ. And Beth and I are here to represent SEEK, and we just want to say that SEEK enthusiastically supports Dr. Noonan's proposed budget. We especially support and appreciate the focus on compensation in the form of a STEP increase and a COLA for all staff. We also are very much in favor of the proposed increase in substitute pay. Attracting and retaining quality substitutes is definitely an ongoing issue at all the schools, and this pay increase would definitely help a great deal overall. So thank you.
I'm Beth Stoffler. I'm a special ed paraprofessional at TJ. We really want to recognize the hard work that Dr. Noonan and his staff have put into staying within the 2% guidance received from city council, while also realizing the savings that enabled them to present a balanced budget, but also encourage the board to take a hard look at the unfunded needs. In particular, from my point of view, the behavior specialist position, I don't think Ms. Sharp would have asked for that if it wasn't really needed, and it, and it makes a big difference to have those positions fully staffed. But even so, we, we appreciate the fact that the community is, is going to receive this budget very well because of his hard work in keeping it balanced. So we just want to say that. But overall, SEEK approves the budget, and I feel like, we were saying, we should, we felt like we should be asking for something, but, but generally speaking, at our meetings, Dr. Noonan and Stuart and Ms. Hall and Phil Reitinger come to our meetings, and whatever concerns we have, they address them, and it's, it's refreshing and it's very much valued, so.
Good evening. I'm Dave Zaccora, the Chair of PEAK, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. It's going to sound very similar to, to our colleagues at SEEK, but typically this is the, the night when PEAK comes in and we have a bunch of budget requests, but this year, we mostly want to come here and say thank you to everyone. PEAK fully supports the superintendent's budget decisions and, and those decisions made by the other leaders in our division. We'd like to thank Dr. Noonan, Ms. Michael, and Ms. Hi, as well as our other colleagues at Central Office, for your work in creating a transparent budget formed with regular and open input, something that we have valued very much on PEAK. Our meetings have become very conversational, and I think that's, it's very refreshing to, to use Beth's word, too. We're engaged, we're, we're involved, and, and valued, and we appreciate that. PEAK would also like to thank the school board for your continued work to support our students, schools, and staff during this budget season and every day. Your commitment to providing staff with a full STEP and a 1% COLA next year is important and sends a clear message that the hard work, perseverance, time, care, and expertise exhibited by Falls Church City Public School staff is valued and integral to our students' success. PEAK acknowledges the strong effort the division has made to be the premier IB continuum school, division, and PEAK is confident that your dedication to providing staff with the same level of compensation and support will ensure that FCCPS recruits and retains the very best and most qualified leaders in education. PEAK continues to work in partnership with the superintendent, the school board, and our school colleagues throughout this budget season and beyond. And once again, we thank you for your time and energy and your service to our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. My name is Matt Hills, Representative for the Administrators. And in an effort to not sound repetitive, we fully support the budget and thank Dr. Noonan and the board for all of their hard work. We want to also support our PEAK representatives, as well as our SEEK representatives, and agree with all of their recommendations, so thank you for that. I did want to echo a, a statement made by Ms. Mead, and, and thank the board again for funding and making sure that we're focusing on helping our students with their mental health and mental wellness. Having a psychologist and having a social worker at the high school has been a tremendous help, and we are hopeful that we will continue to fund those efforts. So on behalf of the Administrators, thank you. We appreciate all of your hard work.
Any questions? Thank you so much for coming out tonight and for all the work you do.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, 2.04, City Council Budget Partners.
All right. Thanks, SEEK, PEAK, and AIC. I know, it's a, really appreciate, I appreciate all of you being here tonight. So on, the agenda item for City Council Budget Partners actually is something that we, we talked about and engaged in last year, and I just want to kind of throw out, again, the, the possibility of perhaps engaging with a partner on the city council side as we work through our budget to make sure that they're up to speed and, and are aware of what our, what is in our budget, but more importantly, reminding them that at this point in time, the superintendent's budget is within the guidance. And I think that's probably something that hopefully they've heard by now, but if not, maybe through your conversation. So to the Chair, I, I would say, I, I don't know how you want to sort that out, but perhaps you could think about that with your team.
Mr. Anderson and I had a chance to briefly discuss it today, and we do have a suggested list of budget buddies, and I'm happy to send that around over email, and then you can reach back out if you have any questions. But we worked hard to try to think about how we can best approach our city council colleagues this time. Okay, moving on to 2.05, the FYI '19 Monthly Budget Report. Ms. Michaels?
So thank you. This evening, we're presenting the monthly budget report through December. This is the last monthly budget report that you'll receive that won't have the projections on for the ending balance for the rest of the year. We're just finalizing those, and we had hoped to get them done for tonight, but they're not quite finished, so you'll see them next month in terms of those projections. And when we look at this report, the first page has the high-level summary showing the budget, our actuals to date, any encumbrances in our available budget. We're currently tracking as exactly as we would have expected, both in terms of revenue and expenditures. When you move on to the following pages, first, there's a chart that goes through, and it looks at revenue and expenditures for the last three fiscal years, 19, 18, and 17. And then it shows you the percent available by category over that period in time. And again, you can still see that, and we're tracking very consistently across those categories. When you look at the percentages, revenue, I would say we have a bit of a variance in terms of the timing, but, but you can see that variances across categories, but within categories, we've been, you know, relatively consistent in terms of the timing of when that revenue is being received. When we look at expenditures for salaries, currently, we have 62.1% available. That's really a blend of our 12, 11, and 10-month employees. I mean, you can see that our percent available for salaries is slightly below the previous two years. Our benefits is tracking exactly as it did with last year, but below 2017. And then you can see for our other expenditures, we are expending at a faster rate this year than we have in the past. It always makes sense when you need stuff during the year to buy it when you need it, and not wait until the end of the year and then do a mad rush, but we'll continue to watch that as we move forward in the year. The bar graph on the following page shows you the same data for each of those categories in a bar graph, just a visual representation of the previous chart. Then following that, we present the revenue and expenditure summary that looks at for every single object. That's really the what, the breakdown of the, either the funding source for revenue or the expenditure category. What is the revised budget, the year-to-date, either expenditure or revenue received, any encumbrances. This chart shows the available budget and then the percent available, clearly with the div zero error on the very top line, because you cannot divide by zero. So what you can see there on line two, since we'll skip the first line, for example, is for use of fund balance, we had budgeted to use $450,000. To date, we've used none, which is typical. We don't ever post that expenditure, that revenue until the end of the year. So you can see that our available budget in terms of revenue, that's unreceived revenue, is still that $450,000, so that's 100%. So if we look, you know, farther down the chart and look at some other categories, I'll, I'll go to the next page, because we'll, we'll see some other categories that are more helpful. So when we look at state sales tax, for example, that's this line across the page, you know, our budget was 2.8 million, we've received just over $1 million, right? So we have about 61% of our revenue remaining in that category to be received. So next month, we'll project what the actual ending balance or the final revenue or expenditures will be for each category. I just wanted to point out one other thing as we look through this. When you look at instructional wages, I'll roll up a little bit more to the top. Instructional wages is our largest category in terms of wages, that's teacher wages. It's $15.8 million in terms of that expenditure. You can see that when you look, we have 66.6% available. That's exactly what you would expect at this point in the fiscal year, because the wages paid to teachers for this year are four months so far. We've paid them in September, October, November, and December. We have eight months remaining, so you would absolutely expect 66.6% to be left available. So, so just a reference point that I thought might be helpful as you look through this chart. So that's really it in terms of the monthly financial report for expenditures and revenue through the end of December.
Any questions? Mr. Reitiger?
So this is actually not a question about this, but it's sort of a, a catch-all question from having had the presentations from the S.A.O.s and the professional associations. I just wanted to sort of go back on something that Mr. Castillo said before, and that is, I think we do want to make sure in terms of the future, on the budget questions to be asked, to have a, a more robust list of unfunded thing, unfunded desires. You know, it's relatively clear that because of the hard work that the school administration and all of the administrators and teachers did, you know, that we, we've been presented with a... with a, a fairly clear package that addresses the most pressing needs. But as, you know, for example, Ms. Marcus's comments indicate about instruments, there's a lot out there that we're not doing. Uh, there is still some potential, I think, that the city's revenue will grow faster than 2% because I'm sure they're giving a conservative estimate. Um, and I, I, I don't wanna give the impression that we are, um, if, if that money comes in, that we don't have the, we don't have ready the clear needs that we would want to apply that money to. Um, and so it would make sense to me to have, well, I don't wanna go back to two or three years ago where we were looking at, you know, is it two copiers in DJ or three? That's not really the best place probably for a school board to be. I'd like to have a little bit more detail to look into trying to set some priorities and making sure that the Board has a say in how, if there is additional revenue, it's spent.
Anyone else? Mr. Castillo?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just one last question. On the fund balance, when, when is the fund balance for this year scoped and locked down in terms of, we, we know exactly how much it is?
That we've spent?
No, in other words, how, how, well, how much is, yes, how much is unspent?
Okay.
What is?
I think that's at final reconciliation at the fourth quarter, right?
Yeah, so what I would say is, we know based on the, the data that's in this budget question response, as well as the general government's CAFR, right, exactly what the fund balance was as of June 30th, right? It's traditionally reconciled every single year with a CAFR and we get a new number the next fall, right? We did include in this budget the use of fund balance of $450,000, right? But you're right, in terms of what the actual impact from this year's activity will be to fund balance, we typically won't know that until the fall.
Yeah, I just think that's really important to message that, you know, I really think there's sort of two fund balances that leapfrog each other so that people don't lock onto this 450 and say, wait a minute, you know, what, what happened to $X,000 from the fund balance? So just keep that messaging clear, please. Thanks.
Mr. Webb?
And quick question and kinda piggybacking off of Mr. Reitinger's question or comments just now. At what point would we have a better sense of where the city's growth would be at and if there would be the possible more than the 2%?
So this general government staff had indicated that we would get an update on their revenue forecasts when they get to their second quarter report, which I believe was in February.
We will move on to, our next time on the agenda is a closed meeting. Um, Dr. Noonan, do you want to, I know we saw people in the audience update when we might be back and what happens after them?
Sure. Um, thank you, Chair Gill. When, when we go into closed meeting, um, we are probably be, gonna be gone for an hour. Um, so if you wanna stay, you can. But when we, when we return, um, when we do return, there are two agenda items that we have put on for a special meeting. Um, the first agenda item is authorization to sign a central office lease, um, and the second is the approval of American Sign Language as a new course in the city of Falls Church. Um, so, uh, that's what's gonna happen after the, the closed. We'll either have authorization or I won't, and we will approve it or we won't.
So since those items will happen later, we just wanted to make you aware that they will be happening later this evening, but you may not wanna stay around for them.
Before we close the work session, um, would it be okay if we updated, since there are some folks here, about why we're extending the semester, just so those that might be tuning in might hear that before we go away. So I've asked Lisa to prepare some information for you to share, and, and let me just sort of, as a context, we, obviously the, the storm, although it was an easy snow call yesterday and a relatively easy two-hour delay call today, did put a cramp in all of our style because this is the end of the quarter. And with, um, some assessment evaluations going on, particularly at the high school, it created a circumstance where some things that needed to happen in the second quarter aren't able to happen in the second quarter, so we are looking at extending the second quarter by a week, but I'll let Lisa describe that a little bit more fully.
So the initial request came from George Mason and Mary Ellen Henderson, um, in that they have even and odd days at George Mason and they have AB days at Mary Ellen Henderson, and so the snow day has thrown off the schedule. Um, there will not be a full day for B or even day at either one of the schools this week, which has caused a logistical challenge to midterm exams scheduled, as well as projects, um, to be completed by, and submitted by our students.
And, and let me interject. The reason for that is tomorrow is a half-day Wednesday and Friday we're off, so complicates it even further.
And so when looking at the consideration as to whether we would extend the se- end of the second quarter, we looked at, well, we didn't know this when we were talking yesterday, but today was a late arrival day. Um, the snow day has eliminated the full even or B day this week. Wednesday is an early release day. Um, Friday is a professional day and there are no students, and then next Monday is a holiday, so there are no students. And so we looked at, um, the impact to our students, um, the preparation times for exams as well as their project completion. Um, some students have expressed concerns regarding their time to study, due dates for exams and their projects, and then we also discussed if there were any potential logistical challenges through the VDOE or through our student information system, which is PowerSchool. Um, after making consideration for all of those or discussing those among, um, Dr. Noonan, the middle and high school principal and myself, um, it was determined that in terms of the VDOE and PowerSchool, there were no, um, major challenges to that. Um, after looking at the impact of the schedule and students, um, we feel that it is beneficial and in the best interest of our students to extend, um, the second quarter to next Thursday, January 24th would become the end of the quarter. Um, and we believe that this will allow our staff to adjust, um, the schedule and the assignments for students. Um, our students will have more time to prepare for any exams that they may be taking, complete any projects, or for our teachers to make adjustments and either have exams or not have exams. Um, and this will also alleviate some of the stress on our students, um, thinking that they have to come back next Tuesday to, after a long weekend to have an exam on next Tuesday. So the change and the impact is that our second quarter will now be 45 days and our third quarter will be 44 days. So in order to make this even exchange, that we removed or, um, reduced by three days in quarter three, which was at 47. Um, so there's really no impact to the third quarter. So the new schedule will be that the end of the quarter will move from Thursday, January 17th to next Thursday, January 24th. Grades will be moved from being due next Tuesday, January 22nd to Friday, um, January 25th, and then our start of our quarter will be Friday, January 25th. Um, and we believe that, you know, this will really benefit our students and, um, Mr. Hills and Ms. Hardy have communicated this to, um, the staff. Um, it's being communicated through Schoology to our students and parents should also receive communication regarding these changes. And then I've asked Mr. Hills to follow up and Ms. Hardy to follow up and have a debrief on the challenges and successes of, um, the whole, um, schedule for midterms this year.
So in some ways, it actually makes our quarters more even in terms of numbers of days. Um, but the other, the other thing that I, I wanna make sure I reiterate that Ms. Hi mentioned was that, um, no student should be expected to take an exam when they got back on Tuesday. So that four-day weekend is not meant to be four days of studying. It's four days of, you know, holiday time, come back on Tuesday, the first exam may be Wednesday. We didn't wanna interfere with that.
Any questions? Mr. Castillo?
Madam Chair, uh, so the, the days in the second semester that are getting compressed, are those just, we, we had some cushion built in and there, we're able to accomplish everything we still need to do, or does anything have to get adjusted in any major way?
Um, our teachers may adjust when they're doing assignments, when they do those kinds of things, but in terms of our schedule, it's still, the students will still go the 180, 80 days and will reach our 990, so there is no major changes to the schedule.
Is there a way we can take those extra couple of days and add them to our calendar bank for weather-related stuff? Are we still gonna be, if we ever were to want to go before Labor Day? Asking for a friend.
Ask that question again.
In other words, because we've, we've, I, I guess we really haven't redu- we, we've only been out for a day and a half because of weather, so it's not as if you can say those three or four extra.
We've been out for a day, right? Only one day. A two-hour delay doesn't count.
A day and two hours, okay. All right. But you can't say that because we, we basically shifted and had a, a few days, that those days that are going missing from the second semester could be counted in some way.
I, I appreciate your logic.
Thinking creatively.
And your creative thinking, but, um, the only requirement is that we go 180 days. Ideally, we'd love to do 45 days, 45 days, 45 days, 45 days, and this actually gets us closer to that, that 45-day process. Um, the, the interesting question that I think, um, needs to be debated at some point, not, not tonight or into the future for sure, is the whole idea of semester grades. Um, there are not many school divisions that have semester grades anymore. We're one of the very few remaining in the Northern Virginia region or the DC region. Most school systems have quarter grades and then a final grade at the end. Um, and, and there's a lot of reasons that we have semester grades. Um, one is the, uh, mobility rate of our kids coming in, going out and the like, but when you look at our mobility rates, uh, they're not significantly different than other folks. So, um, to your point, um, or to your question perhaps, is, uh, i- if we weren't on a semester system, it wouldn't matter when our quarters started or stopped, but because we are in a semester system, we have to have a defined end of a semester, if that makes any sense.
Well, since you opened that door, I'll, I'll walk in. I, I have heard that at Mason, the process of assessments and demonstrating competence and exams are, and exam week are all in flux, and that, you know, there's no real formal exam week anymore. Exams and demonstrations of what you're accomplishing are, are still on the normal schedule. So I think it'd be, it'd be interesting at a future date to, to learn a little bit more about what that process looks like and how it's working. And also frankly, if, if we could move away from the quarter notion, that might help the stress levels of our students in high school too, so.
I appreciate the opportunity to come back and talk to you about that at some point. Um, I know that that is something that, uh, that process of elimination of those semester grant exams, the conversation started before I arrived. Um, and I, I'll be perfectly candid, I, I have some generalized concerns about the, the idea of high-stakes exams at semester. Um, I understand, uh, the, the language and the thought of, of some that we must prepare kids for their college experience when they get there, uh, but I, I would, I, I would be quick to remind people that these are six, 15, 16, 17, 18-year-olds that, uh, should be in a place where they have some opportunities to, to make some mistakes and to learn and to grow from those mistakes, and I'm not sure that, uh, putting a student through a high-stakes assessment process at a semester is necessarily, one, best practice as indicated by, um, multiple researchers that are out there, or two, uh, in the best mental health interest of the students that we serve. So I think it's a, an ongoing conversation that, that we should probably continue to have.
Any other questions? Uh, then we will move on to, um, 301, our closed meeting for the evening. Would someone like to read us into closed?
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move the Board convening a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, real property under section 2.2-3711A3, in particular acquisitions of real property for the, for a public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy, and deposition of public, publicly-held real property where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo.
Ms. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Hi.
Ms. Gill?
Hi.
Ms. Litten?
Hi.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Move to reconvene into open?
Thank you. Um, someone like to certify the closed meeting?
Okay. Whereas the City of Falls Church School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered.
Ms. Litten, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Uh, Marty?
Yes. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Hi.
Ms. Gill?
Hi.
Ms. Litten?
Hi.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to section 5.01, our special meeting. Dr. Noonan?
Thank you, Ma- uh, Chair Gill. Um, our, I was gonna say Madam Chair. Oh, we talked about this. I just don't wanna mess it up, so. Anyway, uh, so we're on to 5.01, which is authorization to sign a new central office lease. Um, before we get started, I, I just wanna take a moment to, um, thank, uh, Bob Young, who has been our landlord here at 800 West Broad for the last 10 years, for his incredible service to the community, uh, his support of the schools and for being a, a really great landlord here at 800 West Broad. Um, over the, over the course of the last year and a half, we've had some, um, pretty thoughtful internal conversations with respect to our space, um, knowing that we need to be, uh, good fiscal stewards with public funds, making sure that we're right-sized for the team that we have in central office and the like, and after, um, some good conversations and some looking around and spending about the last year, um, trying to land on, uh, the right place for us, um, knowing that where, where we are is a little bigger than what we need, um, and certainly, um, a, a cost savings opportunity for us as a school system, uh, we made a decision as a, as a staff to, uh, to not continue our lease here at 800 Broad starting, um, July 1, or June 30, actually, uh, 2019, uh, and move to, um, 150 South Washington, um, for, starting on July 1, 2019. Um, the space that we, uh, are looking at is a space that's about 7,700 square feet that will be built out to specifications for us. Uh, as a school division, it allows us an opportunity to be really flexible in the way that we work and collaborative, uh, in collaborative ways as well. Um, there are, uh, some office spaces there, but there is, there's a lot more collaborative space than there, um, is that we currently are in, um, and also right-size is our space for the needs of the school division. Um, without going into too many details of the, of the overall, um, uh, overall agreement that we've, we've reached, um, I will say that over the course of the, of the length of the term, um, it will save the, um, school division over, uh, 1.5 million dollars. Uh, and I, I think that that's a boon for us, uh, and in the end, um, again, shows that we're good fiscal stewards, um, and that we are, that we care about taxpayer dollars. So, um, with that, Madam Chair, we are requesting that, um, the school board approve, um, and give me the authority to sign a lease for 150 South Washington. Um, thank you.
Any questions? Any questions?
Madam Chair, I move that the Board move to authorize the superintendent to enter into a deed of lease with 150 South Washington Street LLC in a form substantially in conformance with the attached deed of lease for the purpose of leasing space for a new Falls Church City Public School central office.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, moving on to section 5.02.
Thank you very much. Um, so 5.02- Without going into too many details of the overall agreement that we've reached, I will say that over the course of the length of the term, it will save the school division over $1.5 million. And I think that that's a boon for us, and in the end, again, shows that we're good fiscal stewards and that we are, that we care about taxpayer dollars. So with that, Madam Chair, we are requesting that the school board approve and give me the authority to sign a lease for 150 South Washington. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I move that the board move to authorize the superintendent to enter into a deed of lease with 150 South Washington Street LLC in form substantially in conformance with the attached deed of lease for the purpose of leasing space for a new Falls Church City Public School Central Office.
Have a sec. Thank you, Mr. Webb. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to section 5.02.
Thank you very much. So 5.02 is approval of an American Sign Language course. As the board may or may not be aware, whenever we add a new course to our catalog, it does require school board approval. And this evening, we are pleased to bring to you the American Sign Language course. This is a course that has been in the works for well over a year. Some very strong advocates out there on behalf of the ASL course, and we're excited to talk about it tonight. So Ms. High, our chief academic officer, will talk you through the American Sign Language course in hopes that you'll approve it.
So the American Sign Language class will impact our 7th through 12th grade students may have access to this course. By offering this course, it's designed to give students a foundation to sign language and the culture of the deaf community. In this course, students will have access and learn about receptive and expressive language skills and appropriate behaviors to show awareness and respect for the deaf culture. Our students will explore the main aspects of the deaf culture and will share skills and knowledge within the school community and beyond. This will be a performance-based course where immersion strategies will be used. They will focus on vocabulary and grammar skills through the use of language, through the use of language. Learning the American Sign Language will provide students with opportunities to communicate with another community, to develop the appreciation for diversity, which goes along with our IB principles and NYPD principles, to develop a deeper understanding of English. Our justification for offering this course is, first and foremost, it supports our FCCPS mission to create a personalized environment for our students to support their unique needs. With priority 1.1, Student-Centered Teaching and Learning, with 1.13, Foster Equity and Course Offering for Opportunities for Learning. As you are well aware, we've had a lot of advocacy around this course from our parents. We've had students come to speak to us as well as staff. And we believe that by offering the course at Mary Ellen Henderson and George Mason, this will create an opportunity for student success and being successful in foreign language classes for students who may be finding some difficulty. The American Sign Language is recognized by the Virginia Department of Education as a foreign language and can satisfy the requirement for credits toward an advanced diploma. This requirement, the requirement requires either three years in one language or two years in two different languages. So this will allow our students to be able to stay and learn the American Sign Language for the three years and be able to pursue an advanced diploma. This will also increase opportunities specifically for our special education students and our students who may have some learning, struggling with learning. I have included in the documentation that you have tonight, two documents from the Virginia Department of Education that shows the framework, as well as last year in 2017, a document was put together by a work group that supports world language learning for students with disabilities. This will allow our students who complete this course to have a one-point, a one-credit course in grade seven through 12. And of course, it will be based on, if approved, based on student desire to take the course for it to run, depending on the staffing.
Any questions?
I want to just reiterate that last point. Offering it in the course offerings booklet doesn't necessarily mean that we'll run the course. We need to make sure that we have appropriate numbers of students signed up for that, and if we get that number of students, we certainly will look forward to running it. And just to reiterate, it is a course that, because it is performance-based and focuses on expressive and receptive language, it is appropriate for not only general ed students or students of advanced academic skill, but also our special education students. So it opens a door for a lot of kids who may not be able to access a world language that is more complicated because of the language barrier that some of our students may experience. So good opportunity for all of our students to get a different, a different experience.
And just one, one last thing. Our counselors at the middle school and high school, at the middle school, they will go around to classes to talk about this opportunity to make sure that students who may be interested and families who may be interested will know about it, and at the high school, it will be included in their fare for course selection.
Do we have any idea how difficult it might be to staff? Is this going to be something we hire somebody just to teach a class or two, or what are we thinking on that?
It will, it will depend on the number of course requests that we receive. You know, just preliminary information that we're hearing from through our counselors, potentially two sections, potentially, we're not 100% sure because we don't know, but yes, we would look for a part-time employee. We have looked at the VDOE to see what the requirements are, have had some conversations with other school divisions, knowing that they also have part-time, so if there's some way we can share, we would do that.
It certainly is a legitimate concern. That's one of the harder positions to staff. That and Latin in the world languages are two of the hardest positions to staff. That being said, we'll work, if the courses make, we'll work as diligently as possible to get them filled.
Any other questions, Mr. Castillo?
Thanks, Madam Chair. So with respect to just managing expectations, if there is sufficient interest, would this be offered next fall? Or what's, what's the timeframe? And depending on the answer to that, how does the staffing fit into the budget requests?
Yeah, that's a great question. So if there is sufficient interest this spring through the course selection process, we will offer it next fall. The way that it plays into the staffing is that, as you all are aware, it's an elective course, and electives tend to compete with other electives, for lack of a better way to say it. It's a little bit crass, perhaps, but we would anticipate that, you know, if we have, say, 25 kids, 20 kids that are taking ASL, that's 20 kids that aren't taking something else. So that means that the staffing would be shuffled among and between the elective programs to support the funding for the ASL course. So it should be a cost-neutral adjustment.
And could you just talk about how this fits into the IB framework in general and the diploma program in particular, if at all?
It will not, it does not satisfy requirement for the IB diploma, because next year, we will be starting it in 7th grade. It will not be the five years that's required for NYPD, but in talking with Alicia Miller, who is at the middle school, is our IB coordinator, she's talked about how she will make sure that the criteria for other world language courses will, will work to make sure that we include all of those in that course as well.
And while it may not meet the criteria for the language, there are other aspects of the International Baccalaureate Program that it does, it does teach, right? So inclusivity, equity, international.
Mindness.
What?
I just said international-mindedness.
Yeah, international-mindedness and the like. So, and you know what? There's a, there's a place here, I think, that perhaps we could spend some time working with IB, too, to investigate the merits of having sign language as one of the languages that could be recognized as IB in the IB curriculum. You know, there are neighbors in Bethesda, and perhaps if there were enough folks that were interested in doing this around the country or around the world, it could, we could have some influence there.
And that is, discussion has come up through the Mid-Atlantic region. I received an email just last week from someone asking for clarification on that, so I know it's not just us.
Mr. Riedinger?
Not a question, just a comment to thank the entire school system staff for going forward and presenting this to us. As you mentioned, we've had some very passionate advocacy from parents and from students, advocacy that I found particularly compelling, especially the notion that this would enable